The Claymore County Commission is now session. David Monday presiding, please remain standing for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance, Mr. Moles.
Just by our heads. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day that you blessed us with. Thank you for the health and strength that you bestowed upon us. Father, we pray that you would bless our servicemen and women, Lord, as they fight for our country. Father, we pray that you bless each and every one represented here. Father, we pray that you would guide us in our decisions and pray that you would go with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, in your most kind and gracious name we ask and pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Claymore County Commission is now session. Phil Germain, Clerk Colerole.
Rick Clark?
Here.
Whit Shuford?
Present.
Charlton Bass?
Present.
Nathan Emerson?
Here.
Juanita Hennecat?
Here.
Kim Ward?
Here.
Mike Campbell?
Here.
Stacy Crawford?
Here.
Nicholas Epperson?
Here.
Zack Mullins?
Here.
Anthony Rowe?
Here.
Mitchell Cosby?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Here.
Carolyn Brooks?
Here.
Steve Mason? Steve Rogan?
Here.
Sherri McCrery?
Here.
Sean Peters?
Here.
David Monday?
Here.
Steve Murphy?
Here.
James Hatmaker?
Here.
Yeah, only one vote. Next item on the agenda that was left off on the agenda at this time, we have to elect the chairman and co-chairmen, do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman.
Let's try it right here.
I make a motion that David Monday is chairman and Mike Campbell is co-chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion nominate Mike Campbell as chairman.
Wait a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Whit Shuford as vice chair with Mr. Campbell.
Okay, any more nominations? Well, most nominations cease. Most of them. Mr. Shuford, do you have a second, aye?
I have a second, Mr. Chairman.
May I ask, all those favoring nominations cease? Okay, well, this do it is, uh... Okay, I guess we'll do this, uh, be the simplest way to do this, uh, if you're... For Monday, you'll say Monday, and if you're for Campbell, you'll say Campbell, and then that'll work his way out, okay? Is that all right there, everybody? Clerk call your name while you answer for whichever one that you want to vote for. Be Monday or Campbell.
Rick Clark?
Campbell.
Whit Shuford?
Campbell.
Charlton Bass?
Campbell.
Nathan Emerson?
Campbell.
Juanita Hennecat?
Monday.
Kim Ward?
Mr. Campbell.
Mike Campbell?
Mike Campbell.
Stacy Crawford?
Campbell.
Nicholas Epperson?
Campbell.
Zack Mullins?
Campbell.
Anthony Rowe?
Campbell.
Mitchell Cosby?
Campbell.
Rosemary Barnett?
Monday.
Carolyn Brooks?
Monday.
Steve Mason?
Monday.
Steve Rogan?
Campbell.
Sherri McCrery?
Monday.
Sean Peters?
Monday.
David Monday? Steve Murphy?
Campbell.
James Hatmaker?
Monday.
Do you want to change the vote for it to now? Mr. Campbell, seven to... Twelve and seven. You take five. Mr. Campbell.
Can I ask just one little question? Is this for a year, or four years, two years?
One year. And every... Every set term.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Compost in the county court and the people in the county in the office, thank you. So, I guess we'll start, we need approval of the agenda.
Some move, Mr. Chairman?
You got a second?
Second.
Any amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I need to add a resolution from the Board of Education. It was just handed out, uh, I thought, I actually thought it was going to be in the packet, but it ended up not making it in the packet at the time. It's, uh, deal with, uh, leave at school program.
Okay, we'll make that out of nine A, so we can consolidate all Board of Education.
If you don't mind, we could do it eight A, the nines will be separate.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll be fine. Uh, we'll bet number really. We'll do twenty eighteen sixty-eight. That would be out of number eight A. Any other amendments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to also discuss the agenda real quick, I have to give it for you all.
Will you start the new business, or you want to just go ahead and discuss it right now?
If it's okay for you all.
Let me go ahead and get, uh, since we've got an amendment, let's get a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes. Now, we need to vote on the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the county court. Mr. Chairman, members of the county court, I'd like to have a discussion about the agenda and how it was put together this month, and I'd like to look at the long term of how we start putting it together. On my first day of office, I immediately started requesting information about things that were being in the agenda. I had not received those, and as county mayor, I received those at the same time you received those as well. I feel that's a disservice to the office of county mayor that I can't be included in the discussion of how the agenda is put together and the items that are going to be brought to county court before they come into your mailbox and across my desk or something like that. So, what I'd like to do, see moving forward, is that the agenda is going to be starting to be assembled through the mayor's office and then the Karen's office, instead of coming from different points. That way, I can be in discussion and in the loop of the new business that's going to be taking place in the county. Thank you all for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a resolution in place that Karen doesn't...
It's true, she does. I'm just asking, and all that information come through the mayor's office to be assembled in Karen's office, as she always does.
Mr. Eastep?
Yes.
That is wrong.
I think as county mayor, he has the opportunity, he should have the opportunity, as the county clerk receives the information in the packages, yes, if they do that, but the agenda is determined by this, this body ultimately, as you can see in this vote. So, it, as a courtesy to him, it should happen. He should be involved in that, he has that right to be involved. Ultimately, though, what the decision is by you all is to control of your agenda. Now, preparation of that material beforehand, as Mr. Monday correctly pointed out, was determined by this county body, this county commission, ten years ago, maybe seven, eight years ago, where we had the issue of creating it, and the issue was mainly the timing of the agenda, getting it to the county commission within the ten days before the meeting, and that, that's how, at that point, the determination was made to you, to go through the finance and direct it to the county clerk to put together staff file, so that everything's on time and, and we know when it's coming out, when it's going to be available. So, ultimately, it's up to you all. But yes, that, he, he has that opportunity to be involved in creating.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. So, you're saying that it's run through the finance office?
No, the county clerk states it, it's been assisted through the assistance of everybody. The county commissioners and individuals are involved in preparing it and the resolutions and items that are of interest, but the county mayor is too, because he gets all the, a lot of the information that's provided that we need for our meetings. So, everybody sort of has been involved in preparing it, doing it.
Question. Mr. Mayor, you ain't talking about changing anything, you just want the information to come through your office.
I'm not, I'm not talking about changing anything. Eight years ago, when you all moved to do it to the county clerk's, clerk's office via where it comes through the finance office. Now, before that was done, it came through the mayor's office into the clerk's office. I'm just asking for the two separations to be, the finance department can handle its end of that, the mayor's office will handle the other end of that. They're still going to get to Karen's office and, and time to go out and package for ten days. I'd just like to have a clear separation of those, that way there's no ambiguity with where these resolutions are coming from.
There's, that's fine, because historically, that's where it comes from. Anybody can prepare a resolution, whether it gets on the agenda, it's up to you all in presenting it to the county clerk.
So, basically, anybody on the county commission that prepares a resolution to go on the agenda, it can't be just pulled off or removed from the packet, right? Do we need to start getting receipts for our resolutions, or I'm just...
She's, she's stapled stamps and dates, time dated, so you have, in a sense, a receipt when the...
But nobody can pull them out or change it, or...
And then, then if you, you all have control of the agenda as you're just voted, so yeah, you can add along with your back home or take them out, just like you're doing now.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So, what you're saying, nobody, like, even if it goes through his office, he's not going to be allowed to pull it out himself, the mayor's not? A resolution?
Unless you agree to it. If you bring it, it's going to be, you know, ultimately, this body determines its agenda. He's wanting it, he can put into the preparation of the agenda and the business that's carried on, and that's part of his duties.
So, the sponsor's the only one that can pull it?
Sponsor should be the only one that can pull it, unless the vote of the commission takes it off.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we let the mayor, let it go through his office.
Do we have to have a resolution, since it's his for our, we have to be, have input?
Several years ago, you all, this county commission, not as it presently comprised, required resolutions, written resolutions in order to act. However, as I discussed with Mr. Brooks today, you all can act on simple motion and second verbal, but, yeah, I'm just reminding you that several years ago, the commission wanted written resolutions concerning each item. It, it comes up on occasion, and, and, but on occasion, we've also amended by allowing a verbal motion to be adopted.
So, Mr. Clark, or?
He's not out of order.
Okay, Mr. Clark, you want to state your motion again?
Do I need to just need to make a motion that we amend the previous?
The effect of what you're doing, I mean, it's, so it's okay, you can just make the motion and then commission to vote.
My question is, this was brought up as a discussion, I mean, if we're not voting on it now, just...
If he takes the resolution and the board agrees to accept the resolution?
If you all accept his motion, it's not a resolution, and you all vote for it, you can, but you've got, there's nothing in the law, Sean, that prohibits that. However, that's been your own policy, not, not to fault on discussion items, because you get a lot of things brought into you at the last minute, if you allow, and that's the reason.
I'll call my board on the resolution.
Well, I suggest that someone can look for a resolution to be up for all voters' meeting. That won't get a clear. Okay, does everybody understand that?
Let me ask a question. We still, we come up with a resolution, we turn it in to Karen, she stamps it, then it goes to the mayor's office?
He just, yes.
That's correct. I'm not looking to squash any resolutions, I'd just like to be made aware of it from the gettable.
I think he's just wanting to look at it before it goes out in the mail.
I've got a quick question. Say, say we prepare a resolution, take it to her, and, and before the deadline, you want to change that res, you want to, you want to change that resolution. Can you do that?
You being the sponsor, you can do that.
You can, you can complete the way you first one and then...
Yes, you being the sponsor. Everybody understand that? Okay, any other questions? All right, next item on the agenda is approval of amendments. All those in favor, say aye. Next item is approval of, uh, office reports.
So, ladies?
Who's second? All those in favor, say aye. No Republic, one. Who made the motion? Just bear with us, me and Karen's new, so... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Apparently, we don't have any notary public bonds, no old business, go down to new business. This is a moment to E nine-one-one board, I'm going to turn that over to the mayor.
This is a recommendation I made to the E nine-one-one board. I'm asking you all to... This is a recommend, recommendation to the E nine-one-one board. I'm asking you all today to accept the nomination of Sheriff Bobby Brooks to that board. I feel as the highest ranking official in the sheriff's department, he'd be well suited to that position, and I think that's who needs to be there. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Have your second, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have to roll call too?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk Colerole.
Rick Clark?
Yes.
Whit Shuford?
Yes.
Charlton Bass?
Yes.
Nathan Emerson?
Yes.
Juanita Hennecat?
Yes.
Kim Ward?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
Yes.
Stacy Crawford?
Yes.
Nicholas Epperson?
Yes.
Zack Mullins?
Yes.
Anthony Rowe?
Yes.
Mitchell Cosby?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Yes.
Carolyn Brooks?
Yes.
Steve Mason?
Yes.
Steve Rogan?
Yes.
Sherri McCrery?
Yes.
Sean Peters?
Yes.
David Monday?
Yes.
Steve Murphy?
Yes.
James Hatmaker?
Yes.
Twenty-one, four, zero, yes. Next item is, uh, fulfillment of county attorney. Ms. Warren.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Eastep as the county attorney.
Did y'all hear me? I've got a quick now. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Eastep as the county attorney.
Second. Okay, let's go do a roll call on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also nominate Mr. Damon, Senator.
You got a second? We've got two names, we'll do it like we did the chairman, once you call your name, you'll say, Eastep, first time. Clerk Colerole.
Rick Clark?
Eastep.
Whit Shuford?
Eastep.
Charlton Bass?
Stone.
Nathan Emerson?
Eastep.
Juanita Hennecat?
Eastep.
Kim Ward?
Eastep.
Mike Campbell?
Eastep.
Stacy Crawford?
Eastep.
Nicholas Epperson?
Eastep.
Zack Mullins?
Eastep.
Anthony Rowe?
Eastep.
Mitchell Cosby?
Stone.
Rosemary Barnett?
Eastep.
Carolyn Brooks?
Eastep.
Steve Mason?
Eastep.
Steve Rogan?
Mr. Eastep.
Sherri McCrery?
Eastep.
Sean Peters?
Eastep.
David Monday?
Eastep.
Steve Murphy?
Eastep.
James Hatmaker?
Eastep.
Nineteen for Mr. Eastep and two for Mr. Mullins. Okay, we're down to the next resolution. Circuit Court Clerk, quick purchase.
Uh, yes, the, uh, Circuit Court Clerk has a fund, they call the data entry fee for general sessions, that was established in two thousand and three, containing a four-dollar fee for each case filed in Circuit Court. This fund is used to maintain the current computer system at no cost to taxpayers and discounting for the Circuit Court Clerk. At the present time, the Circuit Court Clerk needs new desktop computers, and there's more than adequate monies in this fund to pay for said items. Quotes have been obtained, there's three resolutions, but the quotes are all from the same, um, company, and it totals eleven computers and monitors for a total of eighty-eight hundred dollars. I would like to group these together, so you don't have to hear me say that two more times. Thank you.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we move to the second.
Yes.
We're going to put all three together?
Yes.
And Clerk Colerole. Say yes for four, there you go.
Rick Clark?
Yes.
Whit Shuford?
Yes.
Charlton Bass?
Yes.
Nathan Emerson?
Yes.
Juanita Hennecat?
Yes.
Kim Ward?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
Yes.
Stacy Crawford?
Yes.
Nicholas Epperson?
Yes.
Zack Mullins?
Yes.
Anthony Rowe?
Yes.
Mitchell Cosby?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Yes.
Carolyn Brooks?
Yes.
Steve Mason?
Yes.
Steve Rogan?
Yes.
Sherri McCrery?
Yes.
David Monday?
Yes.
Steve Murphy?
Yes.
James Hatmaker?
Twenty-one, four, zero, yes. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Education budget amendments.
Yes, sir, all of these resolutions, I should, well, my phrase, at sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two, these are all, um... And sixty-eight, sorry, I meant one, when we put it out, the same one. These are no local taxpayers, mostly the grants or contributions, um, and investments with USDA for the school nutrition program. I'd like to make a motion to accept those, uh, four, three, four. Make motion to accept those four resolutions.
Okay, Clerk Colerole, say yes if you approve. Oh, you got any questions?
Yeah, are, are you adding the one we got received tonight?
Yeah, that was number four.
Yeah. I've got a question. I guess it's for the school superintendent, I guess, or maybe you can answer, Sean. You know, and I, and I know these are grant monies.
Right.
But I see here you got, the teacher line is two-hundred-and-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-eight. Now, I agree with that. You know, I agree putting it in the classroom. My question is, is other salaries and wages of one-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, what is that for?
That particular item, I'm not for sure exactly, but I will say this, I know that this is the lottery after-school program, and I do know that the state is very strict, they have a lot of restrictions on how they can spend it, just, and the only reason why I know that is because I have been a part of that program beginning with, and I know the lady is over for the county, and she, I'm telling you, I mean, it's, I know the one's over, my particular, so it's very tedious, uh, as far as what the state requires to do this by. I don't know exactly what that particular item is, but I do know that there's, there's a whole lot that goes into this, supervisor and the teachers, and you have the TAs and stuff, but also working the part-time people, um, but I'm not sure exactly what that other salary and wages is, just to be honest with you. That may actually be a kitchen stack, because there actually is a meal that's prepared and that, or a snack goes in.
And I apologize for not getting with you this week before this meeting, I've been busy, that'll never happen again. But, do you, do you have any idea of the hundred-thousand, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, where that, where that's going to go? Other salaries and wages, I guess? I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me right now.
I'm sorry, Sean, is this the leaf screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the total dollar amount of that leaf screen, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it's approximately five-hundred-and-four-thousand dollars for the school district, and yes, Mr. Peters is correct in that, there are certain rigid guidelines that are set forth by the state. As a matter of fact, we were monitored, uh, along the lines of this very grant for this past year by the State Department of Ed, and I will go out here on record and say, as a matter of fact, we did quite well in that monitoring process, I don't have those numbers exactly in front of me, but I will say this, uh, Claymore High School, as a matter of fact, was selected by the State Department of Ed as a model school for the leaf screen program, so that was exciting to see for our school district. I just don't have the information you have, uh, certain, from me.
I, I guess my question is this, or what, you know, I don't have a problem with it going to classroom, I believe that's where it ought to go, but when you have this other salaries and wages, to me, if that goes to somebody to be put in the central office, another one of these jobs created, you know, I mean, I would have to know the reason for that.
I will say this, if your concern is about, is any of that money going toward creating a job or a position to central office, I can stand there in front of you and tell you right now, no, that is not the case. Now, if you would like to come and speak with me, uh, you know, and we, you'd like to talk one, one night, we'd be more than glad to honor that meeting.
I will, and again, I apologize, I, I've been busy downtown this week, but I apologize for not doing that.
I'm respectful of your time, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussions? Clerk Colerole.
Rick Clark?
Yes.
Whit Shuford?
Yes.
Charlton Bass?
Yes.
Nathan Emerson?
Yes.
Juanita Hennecat?
Yes.
Kim Ward?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
Yes.
Stacy Crawford?
Yes.
Nicholas Epperson?
Yes.
Zack Mullins?
Yes.
Anthony Rowe?
Yes.
Mitchell Cosby?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Yes. Carolyn Brooks? Yes.
Steve Mason?
Yes.
Steve Rogan?
Yes.
Sherri McCrery?
Yes.
Sean Peters?
Yes.
David Monday?
Yes.
Steve Murphy?
Yes.
Twenty-one, four, zero, yes. Resolution two thousand eighteen thousand oh-six-three, Board of Education, Energy-Efficient Schools Initiative, Mr. Baker.
And this, uh, I was asked about the sponsor of this resolution, I told the director And this, uh, I was asked about sponsoring this resolution. I told the director that I didn't care to sign it, that it's been on here for the meeting, but I'm gonna let it to classroom. I make a motion to accept this, just so we can get it on the table and discuss it. But I'll let the gentleman from, uh, EESI, whatever it's called, uh, I'll let them come up and speak to us now.
I need a second.
Thank you. Commissioners, to meet with your permission, I'd like to maybe just give a little bit of background or segue information before our guests speak this evening. The initiative you have in front of you, the ESG, uh, actually, what you have is an EESI, okay, sorry about all the acronyms. But this is a, um, uh, energy efficient, energy efficient initiative that our board unanimously approved several months back. And one of the things that we wanted to do, respectful to you as, uh, New County Court, was, uh, reserve, uh, the select voting privilege for this on this initiative. It is a budget neutral, uh, initiative, if you will, where the, uh, dollar amount on the school upgrades and facility upgrades, uh, is, uh, you know, uh, conducted off of the, uh, allotted, uh, utility cost savings each school year, okay? Uh, I will say this, uh, if you've been looking at the papers here recently, you will know that our school district is making great strides, if you will. Uh, for example, one of the things you've recently seen, and makes me, as your Director of Schools, so proud to be in your school district, first and foremost, let me say that publicly to you. I'm truly honored to be here and it's indeed a pleasure to be speaking with you this evening. We just moved from, uh, Level One, which is the lowest categorization rating by the Tennessee Department of Education in our growth, to our, the highest, which is Level Five. Uh, as a matter of fact, we still have, you've seen probably several articles with regard to the improvements our schools have made here in the school district. I think you would agree with me that Clayborne County is a great place to be. And what you have before you this evening is an honorable opportunity for you to be a part of this positive movement moving forward. Uh, you know, in reality, are our school buildings, uh, you know, needing some repairs? Yes, they are. This is a, um, unique way, if you will, of getting those upgrades done and completed, uh, as they will explain to you in just a few moments, but I want to kind of bring you up to par as well. Uh, you know, this is a, uh, an opportunity to get upgrades that we do need. They have done. All schools, by the way, will receive these two things. All schools in the district are scheduled to receive weather, uh, weatherization, if you will, and also LED lighting. Much research out there with regard to LED lighting and improved student achievement, I might add. Those two things, uh, you know, specifically can help us really continue to move our kids forward in such a positive way. I think you would be in agreement. We want our kids here in the Clayborne County School District to have all the opportunities they're capable of having, yes. Uh, also, this is, uh, something that we wanted to make sure that we presented to you, that you could, uh, you know, take a look at the Xanion tonight, uh, for an opportunity to improve our buildings. Now, after those two things with regards to the, um, weatherization and the, uh, LED lighting, you'll see a little bit of variation from school to school. Some schools will need a little bit more based on need. Some schools will need a little bit less. So we just appreciate you taking the opportunity to listen to our representative tonight from Energy Systems Group, if you will. And, uh, I will tell you, it's been a joy working with our board on this initiative, also the County Commission, and also with ESG and EESI. So at this time, I'm gonna turn the, um, opportunity to speak here with the initiative over to Mr. Josh McNeil from ESG. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Uh, some of you, good to see, um, you again, others, uh, nice to meet you this evening. I just, first off, I'd like to say, as a fault to Dr. Miller, you know, we've been going through this process now for over a year and a half, uh, and I would just like to, you know, extend the sincere thanks to the school district, to the board, to the staff, uh, to the County Commission, everyone, and Mr. Owens, Mr. East Step, I mean, everyone has been very, very supportive throughout this entire process to bring us to this point. What I just passed out was a quick, I would call it project summary, that gives some specific information about this particular project, um, the details of it, and what we plan to do. Uh, as always, um, I'm kind of walking and talking. If you've got any questions, please stop me, interrupt me, ask, uh, and I'll be happy to answer them. Uh, and possibly you can, you can turn around with me. Um, I'm gonna start out by briefly just giving you a little bit of information about us, uh, about Energy Systems Group. Once again, my name is Josh McNeil. I have Kevin Waters and Stanley Prophet, uh, here with us as well. We were established in nineteen ninety-four, uh, opened our first Tennessee office in Johnson City in nineteen ninety-nine. All three of us are located locally here, uh, in Tennessee. Since that point in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, our main focus has been K-12 schools. Uh, and since that time, we've done over two hundred million dollars of upgrades for many, many, many K-12 school districts located throughout the state of Tennessee, but particularly here in East Tennessee. If you'll flip the next page where the Tennessee flag is, you know, there, there's a list if our reference is there, you'll notice some familiar names on there. Anderson County Schools, Johnson City Schools, Kingsport City Schools, Bradley County Schools, you can read the list on and so forth. But the one thing I wanted to point out on this list is you can see three phases, two phases, three phases, two phases. We're actually underway developing a second phase of Anderson County Schools, um, as I'm talking right now. And we believe that speaks to our exceptional ability to deliver projects of value, um, projects to save what they're supposed to save and to pay for themselves, and it makes districts and cities want to work with us again. So just to give you a little bit of background on ourselves. Moving to the next page, our, our main focus at the end of the day is creating the best learning environment possible for the kids and for the teachers that teach them. There's a lot of different qualities of a good learning environment you can look at. I mean, attractive, comfortable, good lighting, um, humidity control, proper lighting levels, quiet. But at the end of the day, when we walk into your schools, we're not just looking at, yes, we are looking at how much energy can be saved, but we're looking at what can maximize the learning environment each and every school that we walk in on a day-to-day basis. The next page speaks a little bit more to that. Um, there are significant benefits to a quality learning environment. I think all of you have walked in, you know, schools that are a little bit on the, on the lower end, probably older, older equipment, older style ceilings and lighting. And you see the type of environment that is versus renovated or even newer schools and the type of environment that is to learn and to teach in. And our goal is to, is to, is to create the best one possible. Moving to the next slide, very simply, how our projects work, and it's very unique. We're not coming before you asking for additional money. Our goal is to go in and work with school districts to reduce money they're already spending and use that money to pay for the upgrades with our projects. So at its most basic level, the money for this project is already being paid to the utility company right now. You're just not getting the benefit of the added equipment. Once we go in and do these projects, the costs of the utilities go down. We're looking at and guaranteeing right at about two hundred thousand dollars a year annually of reduced costs. And that's the money that'll be used to fund the upgrades for this project. Going a little bit more detail, uh, on the project information slide, and this has quite a few bullet points. Uh, I heard, uh, one of the commissioners talking about the state process and how stringent they are, you know, and the qualifications they have. What we went through for this project was a very similar process. It was through the Energy Efficient School Initiative. This was a initiative and a group funded with lottery funds many years ago. They put ninety million into a bucket and they had this group oversee that. In order to qualify for EESI funds, you have to meet many qualifications, many different criteria. Uh, we've been going through about a six-month review and approval process. And EESI funds are widely used throughout the state. Almost every school district in the state of Tennessee has utilized EESI funds. And it's really for one simple reason. They have the lowest interest rates of anyone, uh, pretty much that I've ever seen in the southeast, but especially here in Tennessee at one percent. Uh, with, you know, as interest rates rising, as costs rising, a one percent interest rate is incredibly hard thing to find, um, these days. Really impossible to find and do that to cover administrative costs. For this project specifically, every project has to go through the EESI TAC Committee. That's the Technical Advisory Committee. This is a group of engineers and architects and all third-party, non-biased folks that go in and they review every project individually. They review our, our cost, our savings calculations, every single aspect of the project to make sure that it's gonna pay for itself and meet the criteria under EESI. If it doesn't meet the criteria, they will not loan the money. There's a lot of projects that are rejected, uh, and they never even make it to this point. And I'm glad to say that we've finally gone through that process, which, which brings us here tonight. The other thing I want to mention is that savings will pay for this entire project, and that's what makes it unique. The school district's gonna repay the loan with the savings created. As I mentioned, that's about two hundred thousand dollars a year. The cost of this project will not be passed on to the county or the taxpayers. The school district is spending the money right now through its utility and maintenance spend, and that will be reduced. And that's what creates the money to fund and to pay for this project. At the end of the day, those savings are guaranteed by us, ESG, in writing through a contract. Um, and I believe Mr. East Step is very familiar with this process and can also help answer any questions. Um, and they also passed the TAC bill as well. Dr. Miller explained a good bit about the scope. Uh, he mentioned lighting and weatherization. Every single school throughout the district will receive these improvements. That's LED lighting in every classroom, every hallway, every gym, every parking lot, and every school throughout the entire county. Going all the way up to, to Clarefield, to, to the schools here, right here locally, and throughout the rest of the county. One, one extra thing that this includes is electrical upgrades. A lot of the schools right now, I believe six or seven of them were built in the old sixties or seventies open-style format. And since then, you know, different rooms, different offices have been blocked off, and a lot of times you'll have a light switch sitting out in the hallway that controls three classrooms. That's not that efficient for teachers that's teaching in there, especially ones with projectors, that's possibly trying to turn half their lights off to show, you know, a film or show something on projector. So what we're doing, while we're going in and redoing all of these schools' LED lighting, we're actually redoing the electrical and providing bi-level switching in every classrooms and every teacher will have manual control of the lighting in their classrooms. And that's gonna be district-wide, and, and we've done these projects all over the state. When you take a teacher who has no control over our lighting and you give that capability, it may not sound like a big deal, but it really is a big deal. Uh, and we're happy, you know, that we're gonna include that. And I, I've seen about six or seven schools. I'm gonna get to this in just a second. It mentions new drop ceilings. I'd like to go into that in just a little bit more detail in a second. Mechanical, uh, boilers, chillers, rooftop units and split sessions is not that attractive to talk about, but it's needed to run our homes on a day-to-day basis as well as our schools. This project will include a good amount of, you know, HVAC replacements, a water heater replacement at the high school. As you can see, um, seven new units at Midway, as well as six new units at Forge Ridge. Every one of the units that's being paid for in this project is a unit that doesn't have to be paid for out of the school's annual maintenance budget or at a future time. Going to the ceiling upgrades real quick, um, as I mentioned, we're gonna be doing drop ceilings in three schools. And what this does is two things. Number one, it just significantly improves the look of a building. And if you would just go to the first picture that is here, um, in the pamphlets that I had, that I handed out. These are actually, this is one of your classrooms and one of your hallways from Midway, from Powell Valley, from Soldier's Memorial. And as you can see, I mean, you can see the HVAC came in there and you can kind of see the dim hallways. Maybe different than some of the other schools you go to, but, but these three specifically I wanted to highlight. And as you flip through, you can see two additional classrooms, hardtop ceilings, not a great lighting quality. And this is what we talked about by truly transforming learning environments. Once again, two more pictures of hallways, piping exposed, fairly dim lighting. Uh, I think we can all agree that there's certainly some improvements that can be made there. And then if you go to the tab, time of results, these are all pictures from what, a project that we recently completed in Anderson County Schools and models really, really closely to the work that we're gonna be doing here. As you can see, you can see a classroom, there's piping exposed, there's ceiling fans exposed, there's a hardtop ceiling. And if you just flip to the next picture, that's what it looks like after with drop ceilings and with new lighting fixtures put in there. And everywhere we're doing drop ceilings, we're gonna be doing new light fixtures as well. The next page shows another hallway. As you can see, plenty of exposed piping, um, lots of exposed lighting. And the next page shows what the hallway looked like after the project, after the drop ceilings were installed. And if you're looking at those pictures, um, I think all of you can see that it makes a massive difference. We understand that the county can't just give money to build a new school every five years. That's just not feasible. But there's specific upgrades that you can make that can truly transform the look and the feel of these schools. And after a project like this, when you walk into Soldiers, or you walk into Midway and two of those new hallways with drop ceilings and new fixtures, and the teachers and the kids walk into those new classrooms, it is legitimately like walking into a new school. I know that Dr. Miller, Bob, some of the board members, Jake, went to Anderson County Schools. They got to hear the stories from the teachers. Johnson City is the exact same way, Bradley County, Oak Ridge, you know, we have lots of these stories all over the place about the tremendous difference this makes on the teachers and the students day-to-day in the classrooms. And at the end of the day, that's our primary purpose. Again, these are just a couple more before and after pictures, just to give you an idea of the drastic change that these drop ceilings can provide, you know, in these schools, as well as some mechanical before and after pictures, um, which, like I said, you know, just some more boiler, chiller replacements also from Anderson County Schools. But we're doing mechanical work here as well, so I wanted to include it. But, um, going to the, towards the end, when discussing project benefits, I mean, number one, you're replacing equipment and systems that are beyond useful life. You're talking about three million dollars of improvements, lighting, HVAC, weatherization, which, which talks about, which is really going in and it's sealing up doors. Ever looked at a door down a long hallway and seen a two-inch gap, or, or sat by a window and you can feel the cold air, the hot air coming in and out? We go in, we seal up those windows, we seal up those doors, and you'd be amazed how much more energy-efficient a building would be. Some of you may have done it with your house after you seal that up. The drafts aren't as bad. It's just a more comfortable environment. But all of these are improvements that are needed. They're gonna be funded with energy savings, you know, taken from the utility spend and just taking that down. The second thing, which it really should be point number one, is learning environment enhancements at all schools. Every child, every teacher of Claiborne County Schools will see a direct benefit of this project. Three schools specifically, we mentioned the drop seals. We talked about HVAC. Every single school is gonna be touched by this project. Assisted to maintenance of effort, um, ultimately, all of these improvements are being funded with energy savings. There's improvements that Jake and the maintenance department is not gonna have to pay for at a later time. So this just enables them to be able to fund other improvements and other areas that they're, that they're gonna be focused on. We write financial stewardship, um, 'cause, 'cause really this is just figuring out a way to lower what you're already spending and redirecting, not to pay for things that you need. And at the end of the day, um, that's just a good way to, to do business and handle money. And then also, um, the school district itself will be able to pay back the loan with the savings, which makes this really unique. Most of the time when a school district is coming to the county, it's requesting, you know, funds that may have to come, you know, from the taxpayers or from somewhere else to pay for those needs. But this is a unique opportunity where the school district themselves is actually gonna be able to pay, uh, the cost of the loan. So not that responsibility will not be on the county or the taxpayers. So this is the end result of about a year and a half worth of work, of, of working with the county, working with the school system to put this project together. And so what we're asking the County Commission to do tonight, the, the school board, um, unanimously approved, uh, this project a few months back. And then we had to go through the EESI, you know, rigorous, uh, review process. Uh, I believe they've, they've sent that loan agreement, uh, I believe Mr. Owens is seeing Mr. East Step, to the county. And so what we're asking the county to do tonight is approve the loan, um, agreement to allow the schools to use this, you know, to upgrade their buildings, to improve the learning environment, uh, for the kids and for the teachers. Does anyone have any questions?
I was, uh, speaking to a constituent of mine earlier about this today, and I believe, uh, he's got some questions for you. Is the gentleman in the green shirts in the back room, bright green?
Okay, have you, have you ever, uh, our sheriff, we have a trustee program. And if, if he could donate some, some of the labor, like in the summertime when the school's not in, do you think, uh, have you ever been in a situation like that where you could save some money?
Uh, we, we could certainly look at that. I can tell you that our lighting crews typically run, because once these projects is approved, our crews actually, because during the school year, we run night shift. So we'll go in once school's out, you know, at five o'clock at night, work five at night until two, three in the morning. But if there's some work program or something, I'm not gonna tell you specific a hundred percent yes, but we're, we're happy to look at any and all options, uh, available as long as, you know, you meet the qualifications and anytime you're working in a school, I mean, there's insurance and liability and different things we certainly have to take into consideration.
And you, you did say it would be done by April?
Yes, and so if, if the County Commission approves this to move forward tonight, we're looking at about a six-month implementation. Uh, so we would look for all of this to be done, um, before next summer, yes.
But it wouldn't really start testing or classrooms would be at a time?
Yes, ma'am. No, we work with, we work in schools year-round, every day. As I mentioned, we do a lot of our work at night, or we'll take two classrooms and then, you know, do our work in those. Drops ceilings will take advantage of fall break, of Christmas break, of different breaks like that. But we make sure that we have no interruption of the day-to-day activities of the school district. And that's why Stanley here, I mean, he lives in Greenville, and he's the onsite project manager every day, and he'll coordinate with every single school principal, Dr. Miller, Mr. Oaks, Jake, to make sure that everything we do is not interfering with the day-to-day activities of the school.
I have a question for Mr. Eastep, please. The loan debt, okay. The loan debt is going to be paid with energy savings, is what I understand. And if that fails, let's say ESG will fill this debt gap. Now, the only question I have with this, have you saw the ESG contract? And the reason I'm saying that, before we, as we vote on this, is this written in that contract well enough to, you know?
Well, there's never a contract that's perfect. Correct. Yes. Yes. They're providing the guarantee that it's budget neutral.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
You're telling us that you can save us $200,000 a year. But when you add up all the loan payments per year, it's 226,000.
There's $200,000 of energy savings, and then there's also a certain amount of maintenance and operational savings. So this is money that's spent every day on lighting, tube replacements, some of the HVAC systems that we're repairing. But there, and that's part of EESI's review process, there has to be enough money in energy and operational savings every year to cover the loan repayment, or they wouldn't issue the loan.
Okay, I understand that. Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask if there is any school board members in the audience. I see you back there. I was at, I was not a commissioner at the time, but if I recollect correctly, I was at the meeting for this conference before. And it seems to me like, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but it seems to me like that this loan or this money has almost doubled compared to what was asked for at the meeting that I was just in the audience. I don't, I don't remember discussions about ceilings and different things. So when Mr. McNeil was saying a few months back, when it went to the school board and it was a unanimous vote, Ms. Mancy was this exact amount at that unanimous vote six months ago?
I'm going to tell you something. I thought it was less than that, and I just remember, I'm 3.1 million, probably.
Commissioners, would you like me to respond to that? I think more than I'd like to. Okay, respectfully, the $3 million mark has been the dollar amount that's always been the discussion point for our board to consider, okay? It's the 3 million and the 1%. And as Mr. McNeil had indicated, you know, it'll be a hard struggle to go find any type of installment there on that 1% interest over a long period of time. The board, when our board respectfully did pass this, it was passed contingent upon the funding component. Okay, so the dollar amount that was in discussion has always been the $3 million, because that's the budget-neutral cap, if you will. Okay, and that's what we had requested of our board to consider when it was passed at the board meeting.
Okay, I understand that. And I did a little bit more math while I was sitting up here, and I knew so everybody better with me. I think we pay about 1.4 million dollars a year in our electrical costs for all of our 13 schools. So the 200,000 savings is 1.43% savings. The interest on the loan is 1%.
Your district spends over a million dollars a year in annual utility spend. Yes, that's correct. Our project typically saves 20 to 30% of all the total utility spend, some even well over 30. This project is coming right in that 20% range of $200,000, which is 20% of a little bit over a million dollars.
Would you happen to have a breakdown of the cost of the $3 million?
I think it turns out about a little over $1,000 per school, whatever.
Some schools spend a lot more.
So your company, you loan the money, plus you do the work.
No, sir. EESI is, the Energy Efficient School Initiative is a state program. They loan the money. We don't have anything to do with the loaning of money. Our company is the contractor that does the work. And we engineered the project, and we do the work.
And have to meet their standards.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we had to go for the TAC committee, as I mentioned. That meeting was on heat 16, and we recently got approval. But they have an extremely stringent review process. And we've gone through, for several other school districts as well. I mean, Oak Ridge, Murphysboro State School, I mean, there's been many, many, many districts that we've utilized EESI funding for to do these type of projects, and every single one was extremely successful.
On page 24 of that, that you handed out tonight, I assume that's a typo where it says next step, county commission approval of EESI loan, 9/17.
That's today's date.
Okay. But I, but when did the school board?
The school board unanimously approved the contract, I believe it was at the April board meeting. And that, the same contract amount was in, was in that contract as in tonight. And since that time, we've been going through the EESI review process. So what we're asking the county commission to do, because you are the funding body of the school district, you technically have to approve the loan, but the loan will be repaid back with, by the school district.
Commissioners, with all due respect, I just want to say, Mr. McNeil did allude to the fact that we had gone down and visited. We tried to do our homework just a little bit here. So we went down and took a visit to talk with select members of the Anderson County School organization. Both Jake Rowe, our maintenance supervisor, Mr. Bob Oaks, our assistant director of schools, and also the board member Wade Breeden traveled with us to go down and talk to Anderson County Schools. We met with their director, their financing director, and their maintenance coordinator, and also some other folks. And they were set up very similar to us on a $3 million budget-neutral, okay, you know, platform. But I will say that they were very exposed highly. They went through the program and the services that they did receive. They went through this similar scenario about four years ago. And so they've been able to take some of their additional savings above and beyond what that installment allotment is each year, okay? They've been able to recycle, if you will, or redirect some of that funding back into their overall school budget, where they could spend, you know, additional cost savings above and beyond what the payment would be. If it happens to go that way, then they're able to use that. They have been able to use that additional money for additional resources.
I have a question. In this proposal, I notice it states some schools, but not all schools. So if this was approved today and when work is all completed, or all, is it 12 or 13 schools? I can't remember.
12 schools, 13 buildings. Powell Valley has two.
Okay. So would all 12 schools, 13 buildings be up-to-date, energy-efficient, or is this eliminating any of the schools? Or is there, would there be a comeback for more to get in a couple more schools?
What our board passed and elected to do was the $3 million on the budget neutral, and at this particular time, commissioners, not anything above and beyond that. It would address all schools, I'm sorry. Yes, and that does include alternative as well, just to kind of clarify anything that you might be thinking of.
I have a question. I'd like to ask the mayor what he thinks about this.
I'll give my opinion. I have been around since the process began with the school board, since the process came to Kenny Court the first time. One of the things that I look at, and this will probably be a question for you all and the finance director.
To be able to do this loan, we're going to have to borrow the money from some entity, and we know that's coming from the state on that. Is there anything that's going to be, have to put up on the county's part? I know where we're at with our finances right now, that's not going to affect us all, but the fund balance that we currently have and stuff. All of you.
Hello. All baby schools.
I'll give it up. I think I made me a ring. So my thoughts on it?
Dr. Miller, something else it does.
So my thoughts on it is, is it's a choice that this county body has to make. I think, given the discussions that we've had with the school board, this has been, I think, the second or third time you've been up in Kenny Court and had a discussion. If it's going to be a budget-neutral thing for the county, I can't see it being a bad cause. I also look at where we're at with our own spending habits and our own fiscal needs. I've asked the question, why can't we do it internally, since we play with these folks to do that while we're out at school sessions? But these are considerations that you all have to learn. I'll back you. Either way you decide to do that, I'm not going to obstruct it. If you all report, I'm for it. If you're against it, I'm against it. So that's about as new as I can meet. On the subject, without telling you how to vote, yes, ma'am. And I apologize about my voice, I've been a long question.
And Mr. Oaks may want to clarify any answer I give, but as a part of this agreement, it will not be extended to the county. The county will not have to put anything up. This is purely the responsibility of the school district that's going to be paying for it with the savings. So this is, as I mentioned, one of the kind of rare opportunities for the school district to actually self-fund a lot of important improvements versus coming asking for money, you know, from the county.
And if somehow it flops and it doesn't bring in that money, then you all pay for it?
Then we're on the hook, yes.
So we can't really lose with it, or can we?
Yeah, I can tell you that we have had to write checks before. We wouldn't be very good at our job if we had to write them all the time, which is typically why our projects save above and beyond the guarantee. But yes, we financially back it with the guarantee, which is also the only way EESI will lend the money out, is if it knows that there is a firm guarantee sitting behind the savings as well.
Mr. McNeil, I know you're a former UT football player. How do you feel about the balls?
Don't answer that.
We've won 200, which is a good spot to be in before this rough stretch.
My question is, you want all this money, but really you not give us like an itemized list of what it's going to spend on? You know, you said this much on this, but you've not really itemized everything. And, you know, how much of it are you guys going to give? How much of our school's going to give? You know, so I'd like to see an itemized list of it, is what I'd like to see, because it just says you want that kind of money. And it's not going to take that kind of money to do lots.
Well, and that's why there's...
You know, but you've not told what the expense on everything else, you know what I'm saying?
Well, typically, I mean, you can view us as more of a general contractor, yeah. There is more than lighting. I mean, and you're looking at district-wide, almost a million square foot. I mean, it's lighting, it's weatherization at every school, it's a lot of mechanical. You're talking about doing drop ceilings down full hallways in every single classroom, three schools getting brand-new fixtures. There's a lot of extensive improvements going on beyond just simply changing out some lighting. And I can tell you, just from terms of, you know, we're more in terms of other general contractors. We engineer, oversee the work.
But the schools that you don't got listed here is like HYL, LVC, and LMIR, which is in my district. So you're saying that they don't, so basically the improvement they're going to get is just the lightings and the weatherization and stuff? They're not going to get any drop ceilings or anything like that?
Well, I would say that if you go into both of those schools, they don't have the same need for the drop ceiling. They don't have the same type of hard ceiling and dim hallways. And, I mean, we prioritize this with Dr. Miller and the staff and the school board. And we would love to fix every school 100%, but we have to prioritize, you know, the biggest needs, what made the most sense, and so on and so forth, with the amount of money.
But could you go back a more specific? I mean, we don't, it's not itemized on what you're going to spend on what, you know what I'm saying?
There was a needs assessment, excuse me, done on each of the schools early on in the process, where I think a group of your engineers came in and, you know, examined each school for potential needs. Sorry, maybe I don't need it. But there was a needs assessment done on each individual school here in the district to kind of allow us to come up, you know, with the most advantageous approach with regard to how much we spend the $3 million. Like I said, all of the schools will receive the weatherization and the LED lighting, okay? Then after that, you'll see a little bit of variation. So some of that, respectfully, would have been in the needs assessment that was conducted early on in the process.
But the only one, and I think it's what she's giving out maybe, but, so the only one that determines the cost of each individual project is you all, right?
As the lead contractor, yes. I mean, you're paying us for the scope of work that's in the contract. Now, with that said, I mean, we also have to go through the state. We have to meet payback requirements, and you can't charge an exorbitant amount and still meet a certain payback threshold, you know, in order for all these improvements to be able to go through, through the EESI process. So they, the state manages that fairly well through them, but I'm not sure how to better answer your question.
Well, I guess, I guess my problem is, we're just getting, we're just getting one estimate for each project. That's the problem that I have. And I'm not saying that's not a good price, but what do you have to go on to compare?
Well, the one thing I would add, and Kevin, you may have something to add, but back last December, we actually went through a formal, what I would call competitive process, with multiple companies coming in, you know, giving references, doing visits to schools, calling on references, showing the type of work that we've done. And then you also have to look into the tens of thousands of dollars of engineering that goes into developing these type of projects. You know, it's more of like a qualifications base, and then based off that company is selected to then go and develop the project. It would be very, very tough to get seven companies to come in here and spend $100,000 apiece to develop the same project, to then piece, and then piecemeal it out between. I understand exactly what you're saying.
I made sure the 1% interest, that looks good, but...
You don't find any, and that's not even around. I just wanted to mention that we actually got, they just changed that. We got Claiborne grandfathered in under the rules of last year. That 1% interest has now been changed to a higher interest rate, which makes it, you know, even a little bit more financially.
I don't have a problem with that. It's just getting one estimate, I guess is what I have a problem with.
Are you all including any other utilities such as, you know, water or heat? I mean, there are some schools that are using gas heat. Factor that into your equation for to come up with this number?
We do, like such as, if you go back and look at like Claiborne High School, I mean, we're going from a massive 600 tank, 600-gallon electric water tank, water heater, to a natural gas, smaller water heater, just because natural gas is cheaper, that's a tremendous saving. So, I mean, anytime where there's a fuel conversion, or if we're reducing one thing or the other, then we do consider that as a part of our savings. But each ECM is calculated, so HVACs, LED lighting, weatherization, you know, we do look at lighting, we do look at natural gas, we do look at water. Although there's pretty significant, as far as water, that wasn't going to be a big saver as part of this project, we're not including, yeah.
I'm sorry, but I've got a question for Jim. Do we still utilize Hatfield and Allen?
We do, do the land, sorry. We do for the landfill, water projects we have, I think, recently. But on occasion, on a contract basis, yes. Even though we still use Hatfield and Allen, they're an engineering department based up in Marsh Town, and we've used, and we use them to landfill and some... And we've used, and we use them for landfill and some water plant projects, extension projects.
And we still use them now, I mean-
We, yes, we have, yes.
Worst case scenario, if your business or your company went out of business or went bankrupt, the county will be responsible, right?
Well, with what we do, the improvements get implemented immediately, and then just the same as occur every time, that time the loan pays back. But, I mean, if we were, and it's in our contract, if we're somehow go out of business in the next six months, we're also owned by a parent company, Vectren, which is a $4 billion utility based out of Indiana. So we have extremely strong financial backing, and the unforeseeable chance that that would ever happen. But all of the improvements that are part of this scope of work would be in and installed before next summer.
Since when has your company been in business?
Well, in Tennessee, since 1999, and overall, since 1994. As I mentioned, since 1999, we've done well over 200 men in the state of Tennessee alone. The majority of that being in school districts, with the majority of those being in East Tennessee.
You gonna guarantee this equipment for the next 20 years, maintenance?
Part of the service and the maintenance, that's what Jake and his staff do on a day-to-day basis. I mean, with new equipment, as long as it's maintained properly, as they do with all the other equipment throughout the district, and it should last an extremely long time. But this is for the cost of the equipment, the installation of the equipment. You know, a long-term maintenance agreement for things that, you know, for things like that would be very, very costly, so.
Yeah, I know, but if you're late in five years, it lasts about anything you buy, do you have any more? So you know, are you gonna guarantee that price if we have to buy a new unit to set right back in place?
Well, I think any other contractor would tell you that there's a warranty associated with the equipment that we're providing you, and that goes in, and we'll absolutely honor any and all warranties associated with the equipment that we put in. And if something happens while it's under warranty, then absolutely, it'll be replaced. But if you go buy a new carrier, York, train, whatever it may be, Chiller, and it breaks down 10 years from now, or a compressor goes out, it'd be hard pressed to find someone to pay the cost of that.
You know, commissioners, I'd just like to take an opportunity to say, you know, our maintenance folks, headed by Mr. Jake Rowe, are sacred to none. I've worked in several school districts, and I will tell you that these gentlemen do a fantastic job. And if you know anything about their technical skills, you're probably inclined to agree with me. But a piece of this too, I would like for you to consider as you're thinking about this initiative, is the preventive maintenance. If you'll notice at the beginning, I did say respectfully, you know, our buildings are not gonna do anything to get them lower, right? So, you know, right now, things like, you know, roofs are, you know, I don't wanna jinx ourselves here or anything, but you know, we're in fairly good shape there at this point, weren't anything unexpectedly. But there's a piece of this too on the preventive maintenance side that will also allow, you know, or prevent, if you will, our maintenance personnel from having to work on certain things by having certain new AC HVAC type units in certain buildings, that, you know, they're just getting over as well. It'll allow them to focus and concentrate their efforts in other areas of work here to keep everything operational for our students and our teachers here in the school district.
Dr. Miller, I have a question. Is, not that I'm saying that we've got two options, either vote yes or no, or table this. My question is, is does a decision have to be made tonight? Or is this contract gonna stand good for a couple more months?
With the ESI money, which is why it took us 60, there's a wait in this for that money, so they're just not gonna keep holding that money when there's other districts waiting for it.
Will we lose that interest rate?
Yes.
And how long do we have before the deadline of that? Don't know?
Yeah, I don't work for ESI, so I can't-
The reason I ask that question is that historically, this body has created committees to explore things that are much, well, that are similar to this. And by all means, I'm not saying that let's create a committee and let's meet for 10 years to discuss this. I don't know if it's through a workshop with the school board, or what that manner is for us. I think we're all a little bit still skeptical, or, you know, getting something for nothing is kind of scary to jump into. So what I'm saying is, can we do anything to maybe educate this body a little better on the pros and cons of this and make a decision next month without going through the formalities of just tabling this? Or voting up or down?
As far as the timeline, you know, I might have to refer either to Mr. McNeil or perhaps Mr. Eastep on this. I will say respectfully, County Court, you know, when our board did respectfully take a look at, they did pass this issue, man, and it must leave pending ESI funding. And that ESI funding piece, that contract took eight months to develop. Mr. McNeil did mention to you earlier about, you know, working night shift. One of the things that we have kind of lost a window on, if you will strategically, is that had, you know, everything, and of course, we were waiting on that funding and the contract to be, you know, generated. So we lost that window, if you will, of June and July, where they could have worked double shifts and perhaps got a lot of this work done, you know, in a kind of a doubling-up type timeframe. But as far as, you know, could this be delayed for a month and still take a little of that 1% interest? I'll have to refer to these gentlemen.
Has the school systems ever used Hatfield and Allen engineers to redefine, you know, what?
Since I've just been here, coming out of my first year, I'll refer back to maybe Mr. Rowe? No, it's what I'm being told.
Any other questions, Sheriff?
I'd like to make a motion, we put this off until next month, let him come back.
Can that be done, Josh?
Yeah, I've got a motion to table this until next month, come back, itemize it, leave it on the schedule. Change this to second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call Warren.
Yes. Which you heard?
Yes. Yes.
Juanita, honey, yes. Kim Lawrence?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
E. Wallace, Jefferson? Zack Collins?
Yes.
Tiffany Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. Kosty?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Yes.
Carolyn Brooks?
Yes.
Steve Mason?
Yes.
Steve Brogan?
Yes.
Sheeran Prairie?
No.
Sean Heger?
No.
David Monday?
Yes.
Steve Murphy?
Yes.
James Hattler?
Yes.
Eighteen, four, and three against, so a motion taken until next month. Next guy on the agenda is number two of four committees, Ms. Honeycutt.
Vote in the air, okay. This resolution to recommend committee members, this same resolution, well, actually, it's not exactly the same wording, was brought in 2014 by a county commissioner, and it was set up in pretty much the same way, that was listing the committee members that are recommended. And so that is kind of what I followed after to do this. I know there's been a little bit of controversy about it, there's been some phone calls and some accusations of ulterior motives and things like that. And I just want to set the record clear that I've been on this county commission for 20 years, and I've never brought a resolution for any kind of a hidden agenda or any kind of a ulterior motive. But certainly, the resolution four years ago came in the packet, and the people who were listed to be recommended could look over that for those 10 that will become the county commission meeting. And then that resolution was passed, I think it was 20 to 1, we had one person that voted against it. Certainly, anybody that's listed on any of these committees have the right to decline if you don't want to serve on a committee, and I'll give you a minute or maybe not even a minute. Just let me know if anybody on any of these committees would like to decline. I'm asking for declinations.
Do we need to get a second first, when they will-
No, I'm not.
If you want to change it.
You've got-
I know, I'm not, I don't have my motion yet.
You have six groups on the audit, or the, is it the audit committee? Yeah, and I would like to ask off the-
Okay. So I'll remove Mr. Bass from the audit committee. So let the record reflect that we had one person to decline, and with no other declinations, I would like to make a motion, I need to put my motion-
I'd like to pull my name off, vote your committee, please. I would like to pull my name off, vote your committee, please.
And the reason that I pulled that off is because personally, I believe that these committees should not be voted on under a piece of paper. It should be voted on at end of court, nominations made, because clearly states in the TCA that they will be elected, not appointed. And we are appointing a piece of paper, not electing individuals by nomination.
This is the way that it was done four years ago. You will note that one change is that this, these committees that are recommended are just for one year, and they will be reviewed on an annual basis going forward, which I think is a big change. It gives everybody opportunity to serve on different committees. So with that said, I make a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll say it, I'll say it. Any other discussion?
Juanita, maybe you can answer a few questions here. The budget committee, the buildings and grounds committee, are these not appointed by the mayor?
No. Jimmy?
No, they're under the 1981 Act that we adopted in whatever year it was. It provides in TCA 5-21-105, county legislative body, this budget, may authorize the committee, and it's a financial management committee, to assume the functions of any or all of the following special committees, or the county legislative body, made by resolution, create a budget committee, an investment committee, or a purchasing committee. So what this does, as far as budget, is creating, is adopting that or appointing that. The audit committee provides in 93405, local governments are encouraged to consider establishing an audit committee, and it provides that it shall be adopted, they should be appointed by the county legislative body. The third committee is the, a financial management committee. It is the committee that oversees and controls involved in the meetings with the finance department. We had one tonight. It includes the director of schools, the county mayor, the Rowe superintendent, and four county commissioners. So this is appointing what the statute says as far as the county commissioners, and including the appointed officials, the officials that were elected that are served by virtue of their office.
On that finance committee, does it state even though that it has to be those three? The Dr. Miller, Mr. Pittman, and the mayor?
Yes.
And four commissioners?
Yes.
So it has to be four commissioners?
It does. The financial management committee is, well, it's appointed by you all, the-
So if we wanted to appoint somebody outside the commission, we could appoint them?
I'll have to look. And before we, let me go on to final committees, buildings and grounds and personnel committees. It is a committee of the county commission. So that's the one that you all are appointing and you all have that right to appoint here.
Are you good for a second, Jake?
Go ahead, yes. Well, I'll look through the 1981 Act. This is what the financial, the statute says on financial committee, management committee in 521104. The committee shall consist of the county mayor, supervisor of highways, director of schools, and four members elected by the county legislative body at its regular September session of each year or in any subsequent session. The four members elected by the county legislative body need not be members of such body.
And to the larger point I was trying to make earlier with approving the agenda, and I admit with Jimmy, I was under the misrepresentation that the building grounds and personnel committee could be appointed by me. Jimmy let me know that that committee was brought into fruition by county commission, so you all have the solid ability to appoint to that committee. The budget committee, however, when it was brought into act with the Financial 81 Act, it was a little ambiguous, and I asked Jimmy, had the county commission actually adopted to appoint to that committee or not? Because in the past, I know that you take recommendations from the county mayor to that, and then you approve those. And so far, we've not been able to find anything, and Kerry will be looking for some information to see about this stuff, we've not been able to find that. So I'm asking that you all wait on the budget committee. The budget committee does not have to be done in a, in your September meeting. The only thing that has to be done in that is your chairman and your county attorney. Anything else can be done in the following month meeting, okay? Now, with regards to what I said earlier, Juanita does bring up a good point. There was a resolution, I'll hand these out to you if you will. There was a resolution four years ago for four committees, and these were done in working with the county mayor. Now, I should feel, I feel that I should have some input in this process. I talked about this with county attorney Eastep about this on a couple occasions. He too feels the same way as I do. Or at least, it's not law, but the consideration that, of course, it should be extended. So what I'm asking you all to do is to look at what we do know is for sure. That I've not been included in any dialogue of these committees to say, you have an opinion, is there a preference? What kind of agenda you have for the county, what kind of focus you have. I'm asking you all to allow me to be included in that process. I'm not saying let me make the appointment, but I have opinions on those. With the budget, historically speaking, I believe that that's been done by the mayor and approved by you all. I'd like to find out factually through the resolution, if you all have actually adopted to do it that way. If you have not adopted it for it to be under 81 Act, and you all appointed as such, I'd like to be given the opportunity to make those appointments to the budget committee. I'd like to do so under the opportunity of talking and discussing with different members for these committees to see, one, are they willing to do this? Two, do they have the experience necessary to do this? And on some of these committees, and make no mistake, I have no problem with many of the I've talked about, about freshman people being on these committees. Typically, you as a body have never put a freshman elected person on any of these committees. So on one of these committees, the building ground maintenance, you have five people on there, only one of them has been on county commission before. Okay? Oh, I'm sorry. Rosemary, I'm sorry. Sorry. Didn't mean to dislute you there. So I'd like to see some community in some of these committees, rather than throw five new people on these committees that would have a pretty good working knowledge of those committees, with people that have already been on there before, or where there would be a couple of people on those committees that would be able to lead the freshman people forward with what these committees need. forward with what the rest of these committees need. Also, I have a problem with them all being stacked together as a lump sum of four committees. I believe it's in the best interest of county court and the people of Clayville County that these be broken out into individual resolutions moving forward. That way, you as a body could have an opportunity to ask questions about each of the members, you could vet those. If these are things that you as a legislative body have the ability to elect and not make, then that would make it easier on you to do in those one committee at a time. Also, with regards to the financial committee, and I, and I've looked at the law for what it says, you as a body do not have to appoint four county commissioners to it. In fact, I think it's encouraged that we could utilize people in our area that have experience and expertise in running a business successfully, and having a strong background in finances, any of you attended a college and you've got a degree to show for it, you've got a master's or CPA or some of that nature. And I've also, went around and surveyed many folks in the county, and we have quite a few folks that are of that same criteria, that I'd like to see at least half on the finance committee be appointed to those things in attendance to that. So it shows not only a willingness of people in our community that care for the direction of our finance department, to say, hey, I, I would like to be included in the dialogue, I'm open to be on that committee if you all would like to make those recommendations. And I know we've not gotten to it, but I, I will save a little time hopefully when we get down to the ethics committee. That, that is solely my responsibility to appoint the ethics committee, so when we get to that, I'm going to, you all strike that one off, Jim. Y'all have any questions to me about this, I'm happy to take them, if not, I'm hoping that you can take into consideration of what I've asked you to do now with splitting the committees up, postponing the budget committee at the very least, if not all of them until next month until we can have a good set of names moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
Sir?
I have a question for you. I know when this budget committee was compiled, we had representatives from each district, and copy I got here, maybe a top...
On this budget committee here, probably a top director or something, but when this budget committee was put together, we put it together in mind that each district would have a representative on the budget committee. Well, this paper I've got here has slipped me off, and I've been on this budget committee for a number of years.
That's the old one.
Well, I know, but, uh, I was a member of it too for a number of years, so, you know, I don't know where I went to.
Yeah, Jim, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to change a bu- budget committee, I, I, I feel that you, you all being elected, and as part of the budget process, need to have one member from each district on it, how do you shake that? I, I'm open to suggestions that, I think typically you've done that with whoever was the, the lead ticket in elections, so the first.
No.
I'm just saying typically, unless, unless you were a freshman, and then you didn't get it. So, again, these are discussions that I'd like to have on moving these things forward, but James, I, I've never tried to dis- disclose you from that on the budget meeting. I'm merely talking about, as the law allows for the finance committee, to open that up to where we can have two people that are not from this body on the finance committee.
Mr. Brooks, I have a question. The whole point of these committees is...
Mary.
The better one. Uh, the whole point of these committees is to do, is to move our county forward, that's what we're all here for.
Yes.
And it's not about doing what's best for us, it's about what's doing best for everybody. And just like the mayor said, we have really strong people in our community that would like to serve on its finance, I mean, that we could really benefit from their knowledge. And I would like to see that opened up to at least two members, uh, except from the , uh, from the community that have the finance experience and the education with the business and things like that as well. Uh, and I, I wouldn't mind seeing the, uh, the sheriff as well put on this committee for the simple fact we have a school superintendent, we have the road superintendent, the county mayor, and the sheriff's budget is just as significant as, uh, the budget, so I think he should have a, a voting voice in that as well.
I did have a conversation with, uh, Mayor Brooks today about some of these things, and, um, basically, you know, I'm still of, of the mindset that this is something that we need to do to continue our county business. Uh, we did this, uh, four years ago, uh, in September, and it's September now. Very soon, uh, we're going to have to look at county insurance, it's coming up, and a lot of different things that's, uh, coming up that we, as part of the county business that we need to take care of. And that's my only motive, is to get these committees seated for one year, and trust me, twelve months is going to go by pretty quick, um, so that we can move the county forward.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table this resolution.
For a second. Any other discussion on this? Our motion to, the motion is second to table this until next month or what?
Yes.
Next month?
Sorry.
All right. Clerk call Rowe.
Brent Clark?
Yes.
Whithe Schuber?
Yes.
Charlton Bass?
Yes.
Nathan Emerson?
Yes.
Wanting to add any comments?
No.
Kim Lawrence?
I have a question. Sorry. Is this both resolutions, number sixty-four and sixty-seven?
Sixty-four. Sixty-four.
Just sixty-four?
I would, I mean, can't we vote those?
Well, we already started voting, so you can go ahead and continue this.
Let's play fair.
This is sixty-four voting, we've already got started, two states.
Kim Lawrence?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
Yes.
Stacy Crawford?
Yes.
Edward Settersen?
Yes.
Zack Mullins?
Yes.
Anthony Rowe?
Yes.
Victor Kosby?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Yes.
Carolyn Brooks?
Yes.
Steve Mason?
Yes.
Steve Brogan?
Yes.
Sherry McPrayer?
Yes.
Sean Peters?
Yes.
David Lundy?
No.
Steve Murphy?
Yes.
Ben Hatton?
Eighteen, four, and three against, tabled until next month. All right, go down to the next item on the agenda, number sixty-five, highway park scrap amount. Mr. Mason?
Number sixty-five and sixty-six, one wants to sell scrap. One of us to sell scrap, and the other was to make a, declare surplus equipment so they can sell. I make a motion to accept it.
These were both motions, correct?
Yes.
Both resolutions. Two seconds. Any discussion? All right, clerk call Rowe.
Brent Clark?
Yes.
Whithe Schuber?
Yes.
Charlton Bass?
Yes.
Nathan Emerson?
Yes.
Wanting to add any comments?
Yes.
Kim Lawrence?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
Yes.
Stacy Crawford?
Yes.
Edward Settersen?
Yes.
Zack Mullins?
Yes.
Anthony Rowe?
Yes.
Victor Kosby?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Yes.
Carolyn Brooks?
Yes.
Steve Mason?
Yes.
Steve Brogan?
Yes.
Sherry McPrayer?
Yes.
Sean Peters?
Yes.
David Lundy?
No.
Steve Murphy?
Yes.
James Hatton?
Yes.
Number one, four, zero, against. Next item, number sixty-seven, ethics.
I feel like I'm in a box now. Um, this resolution is basically to, um, appoint the ethics committee as the advisory board of the emergency management director, because he's been designated as the section five oh four coordinator for the county. Um, in this, uh, the, the members that, uh, that we have, uh, listed here to serve on the ethics committee, I did speak with them individually, there's two county commissioners, uh, Carolyn and, uh, Brent, and also, uh, there's three, um, you know, two citizens, and then Gina Ty is not going to be a member, she's only going to be the secretary to take the minutes, so that needs to be changed, that's a type of player.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this resolution as well.
Wait a minute, did we get a second on that motion?
Well, they're, we're in a box tonight, okay? Okay. So anyway, um, we need to get, um, this committee, uh, designated as the five oh four coordinators, um, actual advisory to be, so I make a motion that this be approved.
Second. I'll save it. Motion to table.
Thank you.
Any other discussion regarding, got a motion to table? A motion second to table?
I'd just like to say, the reason why we're asking you to table this is because this is my committee to appoint solely. I've discussed this with county attorney E Step, I appreciate wanting to be a former applicant and wanting to get this resolved. Again, for the reasons I've mentioned earlier, that I've been included in these dialogues, I feel this is my committee to make these appointments and recommendations to you all, and I'll get those to you next month after I reach out, talk to individuals to see if they're qualified, if they'd be interested in serving on this committee.
Mr. Chairman, outlook is probably appropriate time for this or not, but I'd like to request at our next meeting that the county mayor give us copies of the boards, that, the county boards, and who's on them and when their terms expire.
Your boards or committees or both?
Well, there's a difference, committees is within us, boards is... The, the committees are what we're pulling here, my understanding. I don't want to, I would, I'd like for us to have the boards in the county, who's on them, when their term expires, and have them in our packet if that would be possible for next month.
That's preferable than that, I hear.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can you also, um, one, Jason? Sure.
We don't, we don't committees as well.
Yeah, that's my, I, I, I will, I will say this, on my first day in office, I sought to try to find this information out, and the only way that I could find it out was to get it through finance on who gets checked. So I've asked Karen about that, and I'll throw you under my skin, I promise I'm gonna. It's, it's, it's a daunting task since it's never been done accurately to say who's on the committee and when their term is up. So what you may get next month is just who's on those committees?
Who's on the committee or the board?
Both, both, without knowing exactly what time their terms are up. So, but I will put it together, the committees and the boards, who's on them, if we've got information, when the term ends, it'll be there as well.
Thank you.
I, I will say this, if I could, I will, I will try to help the mayor do that, um, I'm, I'm trying to do a little backtrack, but we not kept a running list, and she wanted to call it that, so I'll try to pursue that.
Okay, going back to the table, you want to table this until next month?
Yes, sir.
All right, clerk call Rowe.
What we've opened on my...
Table on the, uh, ethics committee appointment next month.
Brent Clark?
Yes.
Whithe Schuber?
Yes.
Charlton Bass?
Yes.
Nathan Emerson?
Yes.
Wanting to add any comments?
No.
Kim Lawrence?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
Yes.
Stacy Crawford?
Yes.
Edward Settersen?
Yes.
Zack Mullins?
Yes.
Anthony Rowe?
Yes.
Victor Kosby?
Yes.
Rosemary Barnett?
Yes.
Carolyn Brooks?
Yes.
Steve Mason?
Yes.
Steve Brogan?
Yes.
Sherry McPrayer?
Yes.
Sean Peters?
Yes.
David Lundy?
No.
Steve Murphy?
Yes.
James Hatton?
Eighteen, four, three against, tabled by... Anything else you need to discuss that, please, sir.
I want to say this, I'm saying a bit, just a comment, I, I want to tell you all, I feel I'm a senior clerk, and I look forward to working with each other. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.